Today is May the 9th, 2022. It's 10:00 AM. I'd like to ask Officer John Wayne about this. Let's do prayer. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Well, we think that opportunity has come to us here. We've been working with the Department of Commerce, Department of Labor, Department of State, Department of Defense, Department of Homeland Security, Department of Defense, Department of Homeland Security, Department of Homeland Security. We're working on this.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my day's display, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
First time on the agenda is to discuss possible proof of election that we tend to transfer most approved. All of them in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Most opposed. Number two, presentation from Lime, Barker, Goggins, Blair, and Sampson, L L P concerning tax collections, collections and delinquent actions. Jim and Stacy.
Thank you, Judge. Jim Lamb, with Lime, Barker, Law Firm. I'll introduce Stacy Phillips, our attorney that works this account, and some of our staff members that are with us. We have a PowerPoint wallet coming up. If you would, Allison, would you pass it out to the PowerPoint just so they can have it on paper? You don't have to come around and watch it if you don't need to. Allison Williams, also the attorney that has previously worked on this account. She still does tax warrants, mineral warrants, does mineral collections on this. Stacy handles day-to-day collections for West County. I help, especially when we're on the Smith County side, and also help manage the office. Helping us all is Ben Cassie. Ben is another attorney that works on this as well. Ben most recently helped us with the tax warrant that he had to run. Also from our office, I'm going to get some names wrong, so forget me a little bit. I'll start with Lee. Lee Ballinger, way up here. Lee is working as an area manager and trainee. Lee comes from Tatum, Texas, so he's a great family. I still think he still lives there, actually. And Lee's working with Cindy. Cindy Swan. I know none of you have seen her. Cindy Swan has worked this account since the 1980s. She worked for Pritchard and Abbott, and I think then Abbott, Pritchard, Pritchard. Yeah, Pritchard, Pritchard Law Attorneys. Cindy helped build your delinquent account. If you don't know what that means, is we were all in paper at one time. We took that notebook tablet at the end of the year, created a delinquent rule, and you had to roll over the accounts that were not paid, and put them on another rule. And that rule was called the, uh, the, uh, what was the term we used for that? The redemption rule. The redemption rule, a separate handwritten rule. That all had to be computerized. Cindy helped do that back in the days. Somewhere around 1992 or '93, I don't know what year it was, I was getting it down, '95. Pritchard and Pritchard was a store by the Calum Lime, Barker Law Firm, which played a part in the Lime, Barker Law Firm. And so Cindy has just worked her way through, working for you guys since the 1980s, well before we came along. So Cindy's been working in this role well before most all of us come along. Next to her is Michelle Haley. Michelle lives in Mendon, Texas. There we go. I was digging for it. I've been saying either it's right, but I'm close. Michelle also offices in the West County Tax Office. She's a area manager, does collections also for some of our accounts in here incidentally. But she also assists Cindy in handling answering phone calls and walk-ins along with Lee. On the back row, everyone here that's from our office touches your account in some way. All right, so give us.
Casey Baldwin.
Casey Baldwin. Thank you, Casey. Please let me change her last name. Kill me. But Casey handles sales, so all of the sales that Cindy produces. Previously, she produced judgments. Next to Casey is Julie. Julie, give me your last name. Again, Julie changed her last name. I'm sorry. Julie handles bankruptcy, primarily in Chapter 13, and does a lot of those plans out in our office. Works for our Dallas Bankruptcy Office. So there's about three people not here that I would introduce, but they're in the Dallas Bankruptcy Office, and they're the attorneys that handle that. We separate that work, so we have specialists in that area. But we just happen to have Julie working out of Tyler. Next to her is Candice Dillon. And Candice does tax sales on the Smith County side, so that we can think that follows over on the Smith County side. But that touches some of the accounts that are worked out here. Next to her is Barbara Bush, the area manager for the Smith County side. And she also does a lot like what Cindy does on those accounts. She deals with tax payers that subject payments. Then we have to initiate its location. And then next to her is Didi Holmes. Pardon me, Didi. Didi Holmes is the file manager who actually does the document preparation for all of that. So once Barbara turns it into Didi, Didi runs with it. She starts filing those lawsuits for those tax warrants and preparedness. There are other people back in the power office that also handle some of the money and some of the other things. These all are folks that actually deal with your accounts. We'll start with the page one on the presentation. A lot of those folks, I think, as you go down through it, I'll just stand over here to keep through. Let's just get through. I'm sorry. So we've introduced your collections team, most of them are present. We're going to go over the tax calendar. We'll go over our tax collection program. We'll go over the additional services also that we offer. And then we'll go over some of the performance statistics to let you know what's been done, what collections are. I worked for law firm back in about 2000. Prior to that, I worked at Smith County as prosecutor. And at the end of my work as prosecutor at Smith County, I handled the civil work within the county. So I've done county civil work and been involved with that since about 1995. Stacy comes to us around the civil world, handling a lot of civil litigation and other collection matters, so she has a collection history going back for about 14 years. Stacy, what year did you go to work with that firm?
It's been about six and a half years, 2016.
2016. Move off further. Allison joined us way back in 2008. Ben joined us in 2008. Yeah. Correct. Right. Perfect. Bill West was our office manager. He has, you know, over 30 years of experience with West County and worked in West County accounts. And I've introduced Stacy and Michelle, the team here. We've introduced Lee and Didi, and then Julie Wilson. One other thing I want you to know about, Carl Lewis is head of our IT department. And what's important about that is we have about 175 people in our IT department. So yeah, they're feet on the ground here, actually doing litigation and collections. But a big part of what we do is looking for, searching these accounts. I'll look at address research, telephone research, reaching out to people, hotline calls. All of the extra work that gets into that coming out of our IT department is very critical part of having a very valid collection manager. Our North Texas team, our Northeast Texas team, with 65 employees, all of them are full-time employees with benefits, which are not part-time employees. So there are 55 litigation partners, collectors, bankers, 10 attorneys. Three of those employees are right here in West County, Texas. I'm going to turn the calendar over to Stacy, and she can start talking to you about the timeframe, and then we'll talk a little bit more about some collection stories.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Kelly. Thanks for having us today. We're glad to be here and give you all some things about everything that we're doing and how collections are going. One of the first things to know about is the calendar. Our calendar here looks a little bit different than a traditional calendar, and we're going to tell you what the dates are that we're working with and how that affects us in collections. So the first thing to know about is January 1. That's the date the property is appraised. So when people right now are throwing in their notice of appraised value, it is that value, but as of January 1. And that's also the date that they determine ownership of the property on that day. The next day we're looking at here is going to be July 25. And on July 25, on our ballot, the appraisal district will certify the appraisal based on those values as of January 1 in any given year. The tax office begins collecting the current taxes October 1. So for the entire month of October, that's the first time citizens can start paying their current year taxes, is October 1. The last day to pay those taxes without any penalty and interest is going to be January 31. So if people are right now receiving their notice of appraised value, the tax bills have not yet gone out, but they will after that July 25 date, when the rule is certified, and October 1, they start collecting. And for all of October, November, December, and January, the tax office is working on collecting those current year taxes without any additional penalty and interest. February 1 is when taxes are delayed. They were supposed to be paid before the end of January, so come February 1, they are down late, and they start accruing penalty and interest. May 1, the tax office mails out an additional notice. That notice identifies there's a collection penalty that is going to be added on to their account. In July 1, the rolls are turned over to us as a delinquent. So these delinquent taxes, July 1, at any given year, are turned over to Lime, Barker, at that point. Next, we want to talk about our tax collection program, and this kind of ties in with that calendar we have, because again, we don't get the roll until July 1 at any given year. So on July 1, we start our collection program for that year. What we start with is we research addresses. We mail the delinquent statement. We produce a target roll and work plan. And we make calls in personal business. And July 1 is very important because it's the date that it is turned over. It's also very important to have that IT staff working on our end, all of those 175 employees to make our job a lot easier to get the information we need from your roll. On July 1, we also start filing traditionally tax warrants on targeted business personal property. So this is not real property, but business personal property. On August 1, we're going to start mailing notice of intent to sue letters on targeted real property accounts. So we receive the data on July 1, and we have worked through all of that, gotten the address research that we need, and those letters are going out August 1. On August 1, we will also start filing suits. We got the roll on July 1, but we're taking that month between July and August to review the roll, to look at the information, and to get ready to get filing our filings. All the time, all year long, from January through December, we are conducting tax sales. We're doing tax resales. We're mailing collection notices, and we have a collection program. We are, Cindy is here, and the tax office is constantly reaching out to taxpayers by mail, by phone call, by seeing them walk into the office. It is a continuous process for us to try to collect all of these accounts. Some may not set our offices as taxpayer assistance. Lime Barker has a long district of assisting citizens that have financial hardships. We have help, and we will guide taxpayers if they qualify for a deferral, if they're allergic to supply, if they have a disability or some other deferral that they may legally qualify for. We will direct them to work with the appraisal district, or the appraisal district to determine what they are eligible for. We also work with all kinds of local agencies to provide emergency housing. West County has had a lot of tornadoes lately, and other areas across state have hurricanes that impact them. And it's something that we, the Upsher County has recent tornadoes, Marion County did, so certainly not West County, but it's something that we do to assist the taxpayers. Taxpayers can also come in and work on payment arrangements. And they can have hardship payments. We're available to talk to them, both before a parent or after a parent, to try to get this collective and to try to help them. We are not the taxpayer's attorney, so we can't give them legal advice, but we can direct them to legal aid or to another attorney that may be able to help them, especially if we see a taxpayer that inherited property. They often don't know how to get it into their name after maybe one of their parents or maybe an aunt or uncle that has passed away. And so legal aid can be very helpful for taxpayers that don't have enough funds or access to lawyers to help them work out their title or inheritance issues. We've talked a lot about our IT, and it is very important. One of the best assets we have, and we want to highlight some of our technology, Jim already mentioned, we have more than 175 IT personnel, and that's firm-wide. And our IT headquarters is in San Antonio. It is a very massive facility and very impressive what they put together and how they keep our data safe and how they keep information running for us. We do have proprietary collection software, and that supports all of our mailing, all of our collection activities, our litigation, the tax sales, and reporting to the clients. We do have a fully redundant network and disaster preparedness. As there was a tornado here recently, that could happen anywhere. It happened in San Antonio, and everything is properly backed up and prepared so that we will not have any interruption in our business if there is a disaster. And all of our offices, including here in West County, in the Longview, we have a disaster recovery program. We know where we are supposed to go and how we can get up and running if tornado or get our Longview office or the West County office where we can go so that there would never be a lapse in your service on our end. And we are, and I'm not sure if I'm going to say this right, but she gave two certified since 2005.
That means today is.
Our IT department works hard, and it is a wonderful department to help all of us to make sure that we have the tools we need to gather location information for someone to find additional contacts by family members and trusted buyers. Our IT system keeps us running so that we can do the best job we can to collect real. We talked about our mailings, and our mailings are very important and are very successful. This chart is going to show all of the different mailings we have done since 2017 all the way through April 2022. And we have different letters that we mail out throughout that calendar. The letter that goes out after we get the tax roll is more of a notice letter. So when we get the tax roll in July, we start sending out our mailings. It's letting them know how to do so. And as the year progresses, letters get more serious to make them know that we do intend to collect this money. And you can see there is a long list of letters that have gone out. And at the very bottom, it tells you the mailing date, how often we mail out each year. So you can see that we mail every year in February, April, July, August, September. And then it looks like the next one went in March, and depending on the date that we get the data from the tax office and exactly what date it goes out, they continue. It goes again through March, April, July, August, September, November. And it continues all the way down. These letters go out every year.
Something else very important about that is we capture a copy of every letter that goes in and have that attached to the tax account. So if they walk in and they talk to Lee or Cindy, or they talk to Michelle, they can pull up a copy of that letter, mail it to them, just say, yes, here's the letter we sent back, you may, and here's the address. It's just a non-taxic review. So if they are asking, do you have that information, maybe a tax person didn't get it, we say, well, this is who we sent it to, this is who we sent it to, this is what it is. So we have an actual photograph of it.
It's a PDF, our system. It kind of goes back again to our IT and our software department. That proprietary software allows us to keep all of that information to tell the taxpayer, because again, maybe their husband or wife got it mailed that day, or maybe a child got it mailed. But it is a good tool for us to have to be able to discuss with them the amounts, when it was sold. And we often hear, why I never knew about that, no one ever reached out to me. And that's when we can tell them affirmatively, like a letter went out, and who it was addressed to, and what the address had. You can see the amounts on there, because they're small, hard for my old lady eyes to see these. It'll tell you the statement amount, the letter type. At the beginning, we have the progressive letters that go out throughout that tax year calendar. It'll say urgent candidate for a lawsuit, your property could be sold. Notice of tax lien, notice of intent to sue, enforcement of tax lien. So there are different types of letters that we send out, and then it'll tell you the base tax M P N I on the far column. One of the services we provide is collection of the business personal property. And we have a program that we work when the tax roll is turned over to us. And it progresses from initial contact to collection. So we start out with letters when we get the roll. Our IT department searches for all of the addresses we might be able to reach out and touch someone with. We start with phone calls. If it's a local business, we will go to them and deliver a tax statement. If we need to, we will issue a tax warrant, and if it does not, prompt payment's up for a time, then we'll proceed to a tax sale. We have some examples on the next slide, places in East Texas where we have successful tax warrants for business personal property. We had a local long haul trucking company where we collected over 129,000. There was a local trailer manufacturer where we collected over 85,000. Legend Energy Services, last year we collected over 82,000 in Gray County, over $367,000 in West County. That was an energy service that had locations in Kilbore and in West County that was going out of business. Multiple counties were involved, and we were the lead law firm involved in the things we collected and were able to collect the current year as well, since they weren't going out of business or it looked like the current year and the year before.
You know, and one thing that's really important about Legend too, the bulk of their material, of their equipment ended up being here in Henderson. But we also collected for all of our clients throughout Texas with that tax warrant. They had multiple lenders. Each of the lenders had their own attorney, so it was a long, much longer on that process than would be normal. But what you get there is you get that aggregation of your accounts along with those other accounts, those other county accounts. And it really helps when you have that kind of combined collection of power.
And Legend was one, and there were several out in West Texas that were involved, counties out in West Texas, that we actually had to seize the property. They had a field in Kilbore in the Gray County portion where we went out with the sheriff's deputies and seized the property in place. We secured the equipment, we put locks on the gates, make sure that nothing leaked so that we are still able to collect that money for the entities. And it was, our computer system also allows us to check statewide for other clients. And so West County may benefit from that, from another client we have out in West Texas, and they discover that something in West County, they've worked with us as well, to recover everything for all of our clients on these courts of this cabinet. And they do. People go out of business, and industries change, and it's just a part of the world we live in where we're happy to collect those sometimes. We have a very recent tax warrant here in West County where we collected over $100,000. I'll let Jim tell you a little bit about this one. It was last week in the business here with a local railroad service company. We've been working with them for years, off and on, had payment agreements, had been in touch with the lender, the lawyer for the lender, and progressed it as necessary to the point where we actually did have a tax warrant. We did not have to sell anything. The lender did come in and take the amount, and it was a wonderful success, and we're pretty proud of it to get that money.
You know, this is the value of having a combined collection office and a combined collection effort. We were able to run tax wars both in Smith County and in West County. We had taxes to Smith County, we had taxes to West County. We didn't know initially where all of the equipment was going to be, so we got our tax warrant signed by both two different, both district courts in both counties, so that we had two individual tax warrants on the same account. We were able to find the equipment. Of course, we knew most of it was being repossessed or gathered up by the lender, and of course, then we got paid once we got the tax warrant. If we hadn't run the tax warrant, I don't think we could be paid. It's one of those things where you almost have to push it to the point of sale and get it paid. This was an older company in Overton, sold to another group of individuals who had been running it, and basically COVID caused them to not be able to go and do a lot of the work that they had to do. They were also cooperative, didn't pay it, but were cooperative. So we ended up getting the bank to pay it, and the bank's probably going to end up selling these assets. We pay their loans that they have. But again, if you don't have a consolidated tax collection office and you don't have consolidated tax collection attorneys, this is the kind of effort that probably wouldn't happen. About 25,000 went to the city of Overton, roughly 30,000 went to West County, and the remainder goes primarily to Overton. A little bit goes to our I S D and a little bit goes to the city of Arkansas.
We want to talk a little bit about our mitigation results here in West County too. And again, the date range that we're looking at here is January 1, 2017, through the end of April 2022. We show the new suits that we filed during that timeframe, which is 238 suits on 751 accounts. You can see the amount on that petition is over $3,700,000. We have suits where we got paid dismissal on. That would be 220 of those suits for $1,822,67. During that time, we took 195 judgments, and the total petition amount of those judgments was $2,345,838.63. We have judgments that we abstracted on during that timeframe. We have 28 of those that we abstracted those judgments. And when we abstract judgments, we file that in the county clerk records. And then when a property owner goes to do another real estate transaction, the title companies pick up those extracts, and they have to pay those out of the proceeds of their real estate transaction.
And sometimes if somebody does this personal property, and we identified one last week, we're going to be able to do an issue because we now know personal property. So you continue to work those judgments even afterwards to try to find a property that you can go attach to, get them in fact, there is property.
We call it a process and a program because there are many stages and many steps to it, and at different times, different things produce results. Sometimes it's the letters that produce results. Sometimes it's setting it for court. Sometimes it's a judgment that says take someone coming in and pay. Sometimes it's a tax warrant. Sometimes it's a judgment that we file on the deed record. So there's just many different steps that we perpetually push because we don't know what's going to be successful on each individual case, but we do have options, and we use all of them to attempt to collect on your roll.
It's a comprehensive program, and it requires everything. We're not just getting to the top and making a few phone calls on the most recent financial taxes. We're working that role. We find that we really can have a lot of accomplishment even after a number of years of dealing with it, if we continue to work those matters.
We keep pushing, and Cindy and Michelle and Lee do a great job of continuing to stay in contact with those individuals, whether it's business, personal, or real, because we're, we'll talk about this later, but for a variety of reasons, people's situation changes at different points in time. COVID, business changes, family situations change, jobs change. There's all sorts of life impacts that change people's ability to pay or not pay at different times. But all those judgments that we did abstract, you can see it was $294,389.63. We also released judgments, 34 judgments for $540,508.63. You're very lucky to be here in the office courtroom when we come take our judgments. We have a wonderful process to get in here, get those judgments, and move them to sale, or through abstract judgment, or whatever process that actual, each account, we identify our best strategy and move forward on them. That's why some are abstract, some are sales, some are paid dismissal. It's unique every time. Our next page talks about our tax sales and resale. We have tax sales multiple times a year here in West County. It covers all of your entities. There's 23 entities in West County. We collect for all of them, and this is all of the tax sales and resales. So we'll go all the way back to April 2017. We sold 29 properties in that sale. We collect the 27, 29 properties were listed for sale at that point.
Right.
All the properties don't always sell when we go to sale. We offer them for sale according to the Tax Code, setting them in on bid as required, which is either the lesser of the amount of taxes owed and all the cost of getting it to sale, or the appraised value at the appraisal. And that's what we set our minimum bid, that will take property to sale. And if they don't sell, they are struck off to the entities. And if they do sell, this amount is included in the amount collected. That very first one in April 2017 will show $27,214. In December 2017, we sold 12 properties in the sale for $87,669. April 2018, there were 24 properties in the sale for $51,749. In July 2018, you will see 56 properties generated. And this is not a typo, $1,161,568. In December 2018, there were eight properties for a total of $97,170. In April 2019, there were 21 properties for $84,431. In July 2019, there were 10, 20 properties for $91,954. August 2019, there was just one property, and it sold for $9,000. In December 2019, there were 18 properties in the sale for $114,654. In April 2020. In April twenty twenty, the tax sale was canceled due to COVID. You'll remember it was very early on, and we were not sure about gatherings, and that sale was canceled, those properties were put in a later sale, they were not prepared to display. In July twenty twenty, we had sales of twenty-six properties in it, for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, nine hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. In December twenty twenty, we're forty-two properties, three hundred and thirty-five thousand and seventy-three dollars. April twenty twenty-one, forty-five properties, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. July twenty twenty-one, eighty-five properties, fifty-one thousand, six hundred. In December twenty twenty-one, it was one property, fifty-five hundred dollars. Our most recent tax sale was in April twenty twenty-two, twenty-six properties were sold for over two hundred and five thousand dollars. All of those properties together are three hundred and forty-two properties, and two million, eight hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars.
On the right-hand side of that screen is our tax sale website. So if you go to www.lgbsverygoodvoiceandbanker.com, lgs.com, you can look up anything that we have that is in an upcoming tax sale, in a current tax sale, or in a future tax sale. We list those when those are ready to be listed for sale. We can first drop off something there. We have information of an actual map of a property, information of the property, the date and time of the sale, and that's how the public can always track that. If you are interested in any one property, you can list yourselves by putting in your email address, and you'll get an email whenever that property is listed for sale, which you notice, that way the public and the buyers can watch those taxes.
Interested buyers, it is very often to fill out that information on our website. Neighbors are wonderful interested buyers to let us know their interest in our property, and make sure that the most eyes as possible are on the sale, so we can get the most interest and get these taxes paid and get these properties moved.
We have had our sales listed on the internet for years. This is a process that we have been doing for many, many years. It's not a different process.
For bankruptcy representation, I think Jim mentioned, we have a special department that handles all of our bankruptcy, and that is all they do, and they are a wonderful team that is well-versed in all of the different bankruptcy laws and rules, and they can represent our clients all over the United States with that, because just because someone owns property here in Rust County does not mean their bankruptcy is going to be here locally. And they monitor all of that for us, if we pay to the tax office, they keep everyone updated on when we can and can't proceed with that, with files, because if there is a bankruptcy on an account, we cannot proceed on that account at that point in time. These are the bankruptcies removed. We have Lisa Cockro, Lori Spindler, and Cheryl Knight in our Dallas, Monkeys, Texas bankruptcy team. We love having Julie here, she sits most of the time in our Tyler office to help us with everything, even though she resides Dallas, and we are very lucky, and Tyler has someone on-site to help us with our questions and access information about that.
A good example of what this kind of level of bankruptcy protection or bankruptcy protection does, when your largest employer or your largest individual bankruptcy gets filed, in East Texas, one of the large bankruptcies that got filed, a large shipment processor, you've probably heard about this one, got filed actually in the Western District of Texas in Fort Worth, could have well been filed in Delaware, we have an office in Delaware. And if it were filed in Delaware, we would have people on the ground there already, we don't have clients who want to sell something to these out-of-state bankruptcy locations, just like in New York, we have an office there. The Western District of Texas took that filing, but when they filed bankruptcy, they had taxes due to clients all over the United States, who represented some twenty-seven million dollars for delinquencies in that bankruptcy. What that does is that makes your local delinquent tax, for say, Rust County, if you were a part of that, that puts you in the top priority of individual creditors to get paid in that bankruptcy. And that's what aggregating those accounts does, that's what's helpful about it, is when you represent more entities, you represent more dollars, you represent more dollars around the table, when it comes time to get the tax. We got paid in April on taxes that got moved.
This warrant, it was written, and when we were bankruptcy, we immediately involved our bankruptcy department, it was Lori Spindler that helped us work on that account, and even though they were not in bankruptcy, she monitored every transaction to make sure if they filed bankruptcy, that we would be able to maintain our position, our status, and the funds that are within delivery. It's a wonderful team, we are very lucky to have this support that we do have.
It's quite important because if we were to, one, if that office were to bill or call or send something out on bankruptcy after that state had been ordered, Nisha could very well be called down to federal court and have to explain why she's doing, or the judge could very well be called down to federal court and have to explain why they're going after somebody who's in bankruptcy. It's important for us to have that information and make sure that we follow the bankruptcy plan.
We're going to get into a little bit of details here, we're going to go over our tax account for the twenty-twenty tax year. This is our target roll, and this is a chart showing all of the tax accounts, or accounting being what the status is of each of those. So we're going to start with number one, and it's Greystone Energy Corporation. So the next one is the account number, there are ten different account numbers, so sometimes we have the account number, and I'm going to just tell you how many accounts there are there, and it'll tell you what the July base is, which on this one is a little over twenty-three thousand dollars. We do have an abstracted judgment file on this one. Our next one is going to be the Tom Lewis estate. I'm showing two different account numbers there, and a July base of ten thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars in dispositions. We have filed suit on this matter on your pending service return. And what that means is every time we cross suit, we have to serve every defendant. It is one of the longer processes in the lawsuit, and the law requires it. We can't get out of it nor can we want to get out of it. It's important to reach out and contact these property owners and let them know if these taxes are owed, and give them an opportunity to appear in the court, to contact us, to work out payment agreements. Service can be done in multiple different ways. We serve by certified mail. COVID has somewhat impacted that, not as much now, but it certainly did when COVID first hit. If we served someone certified mail, return receipt requested, the post office and the post carriers were not handling green cards anymore. They were made to help them save decisions for their employees, and so they were no longer handing a card to someone and having them sign if they received it. So they were putting C-19, which provides us an interesting quandary, because we don't know if the actual defendant has any idea about the suit at that point in time. All we know is that the mail carrier took it to that location, and so some of the post offices were much delayed in sending out the mail, they were understaffed, a lot of their people were out of state for years. Another way that we accomplish service is a citation by posting. We do that when we are unable to serve a defendant individually, that is saying through an order by court, and then an adversary's appointment, and the adversary's attorney to make sure that we are completing our duties, and we have properly looked for all of the parties, and we have properly attempted to serve people, and we have found addresses. We have many software programs that we use, that we invest in to research addresses, that look for people that move, that look for water bills, utility bills, debt records, all of those sorts of things, to find out how we can get a hold of someone, or if there's someone else that's potentially associated with that person that may or may not have an interest in it. The same thing is on number three, being oilfield services, there are three different accounts. Our July base is nine thousand, eight hundred twenty-three dollars and two cents. We do have a suit filed on that, and we are waiting for all of our terms to be completed before we say it for good. Number four is England Products Inc., there is one account number, our July base is nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and four cents. It is set for trial here in the courtroom on August tenth of this year. Number five is Armor Resources LLC, we have three different accounts, our July base is nine thousand, five hundred forty-fourty-one cents. There is a payment agreement on that matter, and they are making current payments, but another single, one of the targeted personalized ways, once we reach out and have someone, we'll let them make payments, as long as they are current and making an effort, and a sizable effort, depending on how much money is owed, we will work with them on that payment agreement, tell them we've got them current. Number six is the Clayton Deveraux estate, there are two accounts, the July base was nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars and eighty-six cents. And it is also set for trial here in the courtroom on August tenth of this year. And I want to make sure everyone has seen that we are talking about the twenty-twenty tax year, because taxes are always kind of in arrears. So you are getting your tax statements or your, those of appraised values right now, going back to that calendar, for twenty twenty-two. We are already in May twenty twenty-two. The price as of February one, twenty twenty-two, you don't even pay the bill if you're current until October twenty twenty-two. And then it will be July twenty twenty-two before we see the twenty-twenty-one part tax hold. Everything is a little delayed in the tax hold. Everyone's taxed, even when you pay them on time, are paid in arrears. If you pay your taxes October first, for any given year, you've already been in that house for ten months, so you're paying them after the fact, as opposed to ahead of time, whether your cable bill or cell phone bill that you pay. Number seven is JCS Rowers LLC, there are four different accounts, the total amount has been paid, paid in full. Number eight is Liberty EMI Services, there are four different accounts there, and that was the tax warrant that we gave examples from, from Overton, and it has now been paid in full as well. Number nine is L H D Services LLC, there are four different accounts, with a July base of seven thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars in dispositions. We do have a suit filed, and we are waiting for all of the services to be completed. When services is completed, we look at it for trial. Number ten is Joey Shivers and Randy Wollers. I have one account number there, with a July base of seven thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and ninety-two cents. And we do have a suit filed on that, and if all of our service is completed, as we expect, we're hoping to get a date in December to come back here and get some judgments on that matter. Number eleven is Trevor Wayne Tidwell, I show one account for six thousand, eight hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. This has a deferral on that account, and a deferral is something important to talk about and to know about, it is a statutory right that the property owner has to file for a deferral if they qualify at the appraisal district. The appraisal district makes a determination if they qualify, that means their taxes are deferred. It doesn't mean they go away, it means that we are barred currently from collecting those taxes. If that deferral is removed, we won't proceed then with collections, so while they do have a legal deferral, we cannot do anything to collect on that account. If they have the deferral, they can choose to pay on the account, but they do not have to.
Can you talk just a little bit about deferrals, can you give some good examples of where they are on your roll and what they represent? First of all, to get a deferral, you need to have, it would need to be an over sixty-five homestead, has to be a homestead if you can be able to satisfy, or if it's your homestead and you are somehow are another disabled, you meet the criteria, including disabled military. If you meet that criteria, then you go down and apply for your deferral at the appraisal district, and it's a grand place upon all the criteria. The deferrals represent one-third, or actually over one-third, about thirty-five percent of the deferrals in the over sixty-five homesteads of the city of Overton's taxes, so that's a good example, it's pretty much wide, very similar. So of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars due to the city of Overton as of the first of April, more than one-third of that forty-five percent is not collected to that thing. Doesn't mean it won't be collected, it doesn't mean it can't be collected, it means it can't be collected to that. A suit cannot be filed, a tax warrant cannot be filed, nothing can happen in the course of collections, and then those homeowners have to arrive from the ability to pay that out at the due date of the strike, so long as that deferral stays in place. So you immediately start off with more than a third of your account is not collected. The next one for the account is hard to, typically with small dollar amounts, under five dollars, maybe five hundred dollars, small properties. The last third is what we consider collectible, and those are the properties that have suits on them that are, you know, of our ability to go take a judgment, take a look at the taxes. So we have to look at a roll with all of the information to understand what's happening on that roll, to know what can be done. So we have to be careful not to miss later, the entire tax roll is not collected yet.
And something else on the deferrals is those are constantly monitored by our office. They are removed if someone passes away, if they change homesteads, if they abandon their homestead after their death, and that is something we monitor, and once it's removed, they have a hundred and eighty days to pay without additional prondal and interest, and then we can possibly report the full amounts that are owed at that point in time, and it is monitored at least twice a year in our system to follow up and make sure, because a deferral doesn't last forever. It may last for a long time, people are living longer and longer these days, and that is why the deferral amounts are increasing, because we have a population that's healthier and living longer, and those deferrals continue to add to the roll. But it is something that we monitor, we'll give you a big rule later on about how that can be implemented in county. The next one is number twelve, Willie Davis, that has also an additional deferral, there's a deferral on that one. Number thirteen is our Seon Bell Estate, there are five accounts in that estate, the July base is six thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty-five cents. They are set for trial here on August tenth this year. Number fourteen, John Kevin and Beverly and Children's, have three different accounts, six thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents. They have been sent a nervousment tip suit. Number fifteen, Cecil O. Woolley Estate, two different accounts, six thousand, three hundred forty dollars and twenty-nine cents. We do have a suit filed, and we are waiting for all of our services to be completed. Number eight, I'm sorry, number sixteen, Joey Shivers, four different accounts, six thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty cents. We do have a suit filed, and are hopeful with service to be completed soon, and we will be able to get a December date for trial of it. Number seventeen is Margot Gas Impression with seventeen different accounts. And again, those are all consolidated and aggregated to get to these amounts, which helps us be a more efficient collector. There's five thousand, nine hundred three dollars and twenty-five cents, we do have a suit filed on that matter, we're waiting for service to be completed. Number eighteen is Matthew and Teresa Colwell, they do have a deferral on their account. On number nineteen, Lily and Winona J. Stoker have two accounts, with a July base of five thousand, six hundred ninety dollars and seventy-six cents. We do have a suit filed, and again, when the services completed, we'll be able to get a December date to come and take it. Number twenty, Jocelyn Anderson Estate with two accounts, five thousand, five hundred fifteen dollars and seventeen cents. There's an active deferral on that one. Number twenty-one, Archie Bell, four accounts, five thousand, five hundred eleven dollars and forty-five cents. That is set for trial, August tenth of this year. Twenty-two, Bobby L. and Brenda J. Williams is one account number, for four thousand, nine hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-five cents. There is a deferral. Seen a print, there are several deferrals, and we've talked them out over the years, as they don't pay, those amounts get larger and larger, and it tends to hit higher on your tax roll. Number twenty-three, this is a royalty expense, Dr. Jones, from here, there are three different accounts, and it's for four thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. We do have a suit filed, and we are working through the title issues on this one. There are multiple owners after the wealth were originally put in, and all of the owners were not identified, and they get put into this expense. And over the years, even once they're identified, it isn't always getting picked up in the roll, and so we continue to work through that, to request decision orders, to get those owners, and then to file suit. And those are one of those more complicated collections accounts that Jim mentioned, that are collectible, but take a little bit more effort and special interest and special effort, and that is something that we constantly work and keep an eye on, it just takes a little bit more time to get them all the way to the finish line of being collected or sold. And so it's something that we watch and work well with the appraisal district on, and continue to make our efforts on that one.
We also hire outside abstractors and outside title banking, and just work this account to try to determine the type of shares. A lot of times it's just putting pieces of the puzzle back together, or who the family here is on it, who lives on it, and so we have to go do that, we're just no problem filing, we're almost basically, but the whole thing we treat that here.
And our outside title charges that Jim mentioned are wonderful, because they maintain relationships with different landowners that are local and have access to oil and gas companies, they have much more access and availability to get in contact with those companies, prefer easier than we do sometimes, it really helps us move the law in the most efficient way. We next are at number twenty-four. We, next are at number 24, Palana Frye, one account number. We have $4,785 and 9 cents. We do have a suit filed on that matter. Number 25, it's Dawn and Carolyn Walton. There is a deferral on that account. When we go to the next page now, we can start with number 26. Jim Blanton has six accounts total for $4,675 and 25 cents. We talk about account numbers. Each individual piece of property that someone had or a listed personal property account has their own account number. That's why it's not, if I own 10 properties, it's not just by my name. It's by each personal member has their own account number. And we do have an abstract that Jim had filed on one of these accounts. And on the remaining accounts, we do have a suit filed on those. Number 27 is Amy Mers at all, two accounts. $4,580 and 78 cents. We do have a suit filed. There are some title issues that we're working through. We order title through a, a title company that we use, that uses title for us. And sometimes we get, what we get when we look at the records, and if they're not clear, we have to do special projects to work through those and identify the heirs, which is just a rebuild of a family tree. Or sometimes it's rebuilding a, a lease description or a property description. There are quite a few properties that don't have any appropriate description. And we may end up describing by the properties that surround it. So there's a lot of different ways that we can evolve it, but it just takes some extra investigation on some of those. Number 28, Carl Barlow, he has seven accounts. $4,549 and 68 cents. He does have a deferral. Richard Spencer has three accounts. $4,460 and 68 cents. Does not own, we do have suit files, but we are experiencing some title challenges. We are working through those. We have the Truport Energy, we're number 30. They have three different accounts. $4,376 and 44 cents. We do have a suit filed, and are waiting for all of our service to be completed. Canyon Marie Simmons Estate is going to be number 31. One account number, $4,129 and 66 cents. And we do have a suit filed, and are awaiting all of our service to be completed on that one. The next one is the Willie Leah Estate. One account number, $4,043 and 87 cents. It is set for trial August 10th, 2022. Milton Oil is number 33. They have seven different accounts. $4,389 and 77 cents. They are in bankruptcy. As a deferral, we are on hold on the bankruptcies of the accounts that get owed in our system so that we know not to proceed on those. And then we are notified by our bankruptcy department when they are settled and they are paid to bankruptcy. We can proceed outside of bankruptcy. So as soon as we are able, we will either work with Landmark or we will try to do bankers. Number 34 is Carl and Longna Walsh Estate. There's one account number for $3,643 and 88 cents. It is a deferral. Number 35, William Scott and Harold Bauer Estate. One account, $3,592 and 32 cents. They also have a deferral on their account. Carrie A. Bell has two account numbers. $3,542 and 72 cents. That one is set for trial here on August 10th. Number 37, Wesley Bradford and Final Quarter, one account number, $3,513 and 36 cents. We do have a suit filed, and are waiting for all of the payments to be served. Number 38 is Norman Shane Owens. Here's one account, $3,498 and 8 cents due, and it is set for trial here on August 10th. Number 39, Robert Curtis Shelborn. One account, $3,479 and 90 cents. Suit has been filed, and we are waiting for all of the parties to be served. Number 40, Ronnie Lonnie W. Canick. Two accounts, $3,444 and 55 cents. Suit has been filed, and we are waiting for service to be completed. Benson and Dorsey May Atlanta Estate has one account number, $3,395 and 15 cents. There is a suit filed, and we are working through the title issues of this one. Number 442, Lee Starling has four different accounts. $3,382 and 12 cents. This did have a judgment ticket on it, and it has been sold and has been paid. Number 43, Patricia B. Hessler. One account number, $3,366 and 14 cents. Does have a deferral on it. Number 44, Jerry Massenberg. One account, $3,351 and 88 cents. This is set for trial on August 10th. Number 45 is Will Park. Four different account numbers, $3,334 and 54 cents. There is a suit filed, and we are waiting for all of the services to be completed. Number 46, Johnny R. and Sheena R. Shelton. With one account number, $3,323 and 44 cents. It has an active deferral on the account. Number 47 is Amy Ray Risinger. One account number, $3,313 and 50 cents. We do have a judgment already taken on this, and this property will be included in our July sale. There is a sale here in West County on 1st Tuesday of July. Number 48, Anthony Pruitt. One account number, $3,313 and 25 cents. We do have a suit filed, and we are awaiting every other service to be completed. Number 49 is Elizabeth Herring. One account number, $3,304 and 25 cents. There's a suit filed, and title is in progress. Dan Carter Estate is our number 50 on the list. One account, $3,302 and 25 cents. And it does have a deferral on it. We have all kinds of information about all kinds of accounts outside of these top 50. Anyone has a question, we're happy to talk to us, talk to Nisha, talk to Cindy, talk to Michelle. Find one of us, and then we'll get ahold of the right person to talk to about this. Jim mentioned there's a whole picture that goes with all of these accounts. Not just an account number and amount due. There are bankruptcies and deferrals and disabilities and payment plans and such title issues. There are a variety of things that come up, and I'll have you to visit with anyone. If there's any questions about these, we do work those top accounts down. Try to make the biggest impact we can on the roll, and we'll help them anywhere we can. And they're actively working more than the top 50. That's just an example of what is going on on those top 50 accounts. We have a couple of stories we want to share about some of the challenges and the successes that we have in these collections here in West County. One of them is the J.B. Smith case. It was here in West County. It involved a Westlake subdivision. We filed an original petition on May 30, 2013. We had three defendants that were avoiding service. And this is what we talked about earlier. There's multiple different ways to serve defendants, but the law requires that we serve anyone that has an interest in a property before we take judgment. And service can be one of our largest hurdles because even before COVID, we couldn't make somebody take the service. So if we have a shared deputy or a constable going out to serve someone at an address, they make multiple attempts, but they can't force the person to answer the door. Can't force the person to be home. They don't know what their work schedule is. There's many different challenges that are presented, but we persist with that. And if that doesn't work, we use a substituted service. And so, and if that doesn't work, we use a citation about posting. There are many different legal ways to achieve service, and we keep pushing until we get it. But it takes some time. After we got everyone served, we took the judgment back in December 27th. After we took the judgment, we set it for sale in December 29th. Immediately prior to the sale, the defendant filed for bankruptcy. When they filed for bankruptcy, we have to pull it from the sale. It's the same thing. We have to put it on hold, just like if it's before we take a judgment or before we file it on. Can't do anything while it's in bankruptcy. Our bankruptcy department then took over, and once the bankruptcy was complete, we took it back over. And we have now been able to sell the property in April 2022, our most recent sale. And it sold with over $25,000 in excess proceeds. So if the defendants don't claim that ICS proceeds, ICS proceeds have been distributed to them. And we do actively file for those and continue to monitor those before the district clerk to make sure that they're distributed. Another account we have was the Helen Mayfield account. This was in Overton. And another example of the judicial process and our persistence. There are many different rights and remedies that defendants, that property owners have in general. And we have to work through those, and we will. We'll be persistent to get our taxes collected. We will get the law through and the tax sale. The tax account address is 1319 F.M. 289, Overton, Texas. The original petition was filed in June 2015. The defendant Helen Mayfield was served in June 2019, sorry, June 2015. We filed for answer in July, Overton. Uh, Ms. Mayfield was industrious and filed subpoenas both on the tax collector and the appraisal district. She filed temporary restraining orders. When those different documents and pleadings were filed with court, we did respond for all of those. We got her subpoenas watched. We filed motions to watch on that so that no one had to appear or produce documents. All of the documents are public record, not highly effective tax roll, but these are additional odd requests that this defendant would make, and we just persisted all the way through.
If I remember right, this was her mother, her grandparents' house. Mothers and grandparents' house. She inherited it. She was living in Houston. She was an industrious courthouse lawyer. I can't say I'm a law degree, but she was doing very good.
Well, she filed a pro se, which means she appeared without an attorney. She had handwritten answer, like had an address on it. That is where we served her notice of the trial. She did not appear and claim the notice went to the wrong address. Her handwritten address was hard to read, but out of due diligence, we agreed to vacate that judgment and come back for a second time to get the judgment. We do want property owners to have every opportunity to pay their taxes and to, to keep their property. So we're going to work with anyone that we can and balance the rights of the landowners and of getting our, our taxes paid for our entities. And she filed a tenuance. It was denied. She actually filed an appeal to the 12th Court of Appeals here in Texas, and that appeal was denied. So we weren't able to take the sale. It took a little bit of time and persistence and just sticking with the file and answering every filing that she had. It was offered for sale in 2018. It was not purchased, and so we took it from the stock off list and offered it for sale again. And it was sold on July 2nd, 2019. That's something else to, to know as well. Properties don't sell the first time. As I mentioned, they do get struck out to the entity, but we don't just leave it. We continue to work that. We monitor who's interested through our website, through phone calls, and we reoffer it for sale. And that is very successful. They're often purchased the second time we offer them for sale, and then that money is able to come back to us.
You know, that's a good example of why it takes more five extra years and time on a little piece of suit. This is probably to litigation. We're not waiting. We're having to go through the process because we do have a property right to say, if you have a right as an owner, you're able to be heard before you go.
Jim's going to tell you about this next one. Uh, it's a suit that is in the City of Overton, which we're going to collect for all of the entities in West County. Uh, City of Overton crosses the property line into Smith County. Uh, and Jim talks about his county. He has that, and he wants to cover.
You know, that's a good example of property. It sits just off Sunny Side, uh, between the Briarwood subdivision, uh, and the, I believe it's in the big, the Hanzel's property in the south. This property was nothing but a saving except. What that means is through the years, that entire survey, the old water survey, uh, was owned. And then individuals sold out property out of that survey to the north and south and retained that ownership piece in the middle. It went over the, we looked down through the Mitch Barton's probate. Uh, he lived in Longview one time, ended up down in Uvalde, Texas. His estate was pervaded down there in the early part of the century, of last century. And so we found his heirs who were living down there, contacted them. They did not remember the property, didn't know they owned the property, didn't include it in the report. Uh, so we exhausted all of our remedies in locating the individuals and get them into a lawsuit. The only way we could describe the property is by the entire survey, selling out the North Park, which was the Pope's Park. And so we actually got it to a tax sale, and it sold. And so you have it back on the tax roll, but that took a whole lot of effort down at the title plant, uh, working with the title company, working with the outside abstractor, and searching down here. And that's a good example of why just the manpower that we have to try to give those properties to a tax sale.
Just some additional information for the fourth today. When we have these tax sales, it has its other tangible benefit to the county. These property are getting back on the tax roll, and often they're treated better by living owners. Sometimes when we have properties, they may be sometimes not, but these homeowners are wanting to own this property. And they get back on the tax roll, and they often have an increased value. And so here is an appraisal of one that we have. Particular piece of property, it's a business, a couple of acres. I'm not sure if I'm going to file off the market. At the time of the sale, the appraisal district had a value of $37,970. And now after a tax sale, after a new owner's been back on the tax roll, then the current value is $94,930. As you can see underneath the picture, the market value of the great sale for West County, Special Road, Overton Cemetery, Overton High School, Silver College, and the groundwater district. This additional property, you can see how much better it looks from a new property owner takes over. And it did increase in value, not as much as the previous one, but it did increase in value from the time of the sale. It had a $29,620 value. Now the value is $36,630. And it looks much more maintained, and it has a better impact on the community when we do give these back on the tax roll and with property owners who are interested in it. There are benefits to West County that we provide, and one is a homestead audit. This has been done through the appraisal district here in West County and in several surrounding counties. It's a great success. So the audit goes through all of the homesteads in West County. And so in West County, it examines 12,704 accounts that have homestead exemptions. And so far, it has resulted in a recommendation removal of exemptions on 110 accounts, which includes 45 deceased homeowner cases, 29 multiple homestead cases, and 36 non-resident cases. So in Texas, you can only have one homestead. You can't have one and your wife has a separate one. You cannot have yours, and then when your parents pass away, you have theirs as well. You are only limited to one. And our audit is working with the appraisal district to go in and remove the homesteads that are not accurate, that shouldn't be there. And that has resulted in additional income to the entity here in West County. And so removing those cases has potentially added taxes and interest payable to the West County type to be $345,854.
Now, that's just an exit that will go back on the roll. That's not the benefit of those properties going forward. So every year when that tax roll rolls out, and those erroneous homesteads are removed, you have additional taxes going forward.
This is just a, a one-time payment that has been made, but it's hard to tell how much money will increase in taxes moving forward because the property could sell from a new buy. It could be their homestead. But this is a lump sum that comes in. There is one property in the City of Overton, and we pick up all of that through our computer software that continues to track on us. And if we have a note in our system, like this, um, deferral was removed due to the Long River audit. And so it is catching a lot of things that shouldn't be on the roll is what this audit is doing. It was done through the appraisal district, but, and it's still ongoing, so that number could change and certainly increase as they continue to be appraisal restrictions, we just do a investigation into these accounts or with these press accounts that they look at at the end. That's usually for the later part of their process. But it's been a wonderful result that has been there. We have an example for 2020. It would be the City of Overton. We do have our collection rate over the last five years. And again, those numbers are hard to cut by accident, but if you look close, it shows 2017, 18, 19, 20, and 21. And a five-year collection rate average is 100.65%.
That is the taxes collected as well as the penalty interest, but not the collection. As a percent of the taxes collected. So if they're living $150,000 in their collection slot over $150,000 on average for the five years with currents in.
The next chart is going to show the West County five-year collection rate average. And again, it goes back to 2017, and it shows the county as a whole being 104.24%. Same data.
And that was in Denver.
We are glad to be here today. We're glad to participate in the community. Again, we have three full-time employees that live and work in West County. Were born and raised in West County. and raised in West County, raising their family here. We enjoy being members of the different chambers of commerce here throughout town. We participate in the show. We're glad to be here and always glad to answer any questions that y'all might have. One question that's kind of come up recently too and was not covered is how we get paid. We are paid to state sets how the liquid tax attorneys are paid, and it is an add-on fee. So the county or any of the entities are not paying us. We do not take any of your tax dollars. Whatever amount is on that tax bill, we like that you are giving the entirety of that amount. We are an additional amount that the legitimate taxpayer pays after July 1. So that amount is added on to their bill when they don't pay it by July 1, and that is how we get paid. It is not a cost to you or any of the.
Just wanted to underline too, just a little bit, remember the Overton Chamber, the Henderson Chamber.
New London?
New London Chamber. Answered the fireworks show with the Overton Chamber.
Yeah, we level our chamber. We're not about to extend the fireworks, but we do get our fireworks t-shirts Cindy and I do here. We do different education foundations, do T A M and Henderson ISD. It's been a joy to get to know everybody and to be here. And West County's full of good people. We're glad to help in the way we can.
Absolutely. We happy to answer any questions.
And after today, I have cards if anyone wants a card. Again, if you can't find my card and you have it and you can get ahold of Cindy, if you have a question about the homestead, one of us, and they can get ahold of the right person. My card has my cell phone number on it. That's the way to get me. Go ahead, Cindy.
Any questions?
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Jim. Stacy.
Out of number two, number three. Discuss possibly take action on our request from the city of Overton.
Shane West, City of Overton. Hello, we're going over here now. But we, of course, got a lot of properties over there that's dilapidated, roots that have been lost, grown up, taxes not being paid, not being collected. I've learned something here today that a third of that can be collected and paid. That's just what we all just got told. Why do we have 87 properties in Overton, Texas? Half of them are 10 years on the link on taxes. That's why we, the city of Overton, have hired to start collecting any money taxes. If not, we're just going to continue just to go down, be able to not go anywhere. But that's, that's the reason we're doing it. The, not just the county vote, but the council vote, and it's all approved. I'll let you get started, we'll bring it to West County. But how long would you think it's going to get out? On some point in time, it doesn't function, you don't have. I'd like to hear the tax attorney. Patrick Woods with Purdue Brandon.
Thank you, Shane. Well, Commissioner, Judge Hill, thank you for having us. My name is Patrick Woods. I'm an attorney and a court officer, a breeder. Okay, and liaison here, this is Mr. Tiger Bursham. Tiger is forepresident, foreman, he's a consultant for all of them as well, helps work with our county on the same in Texas and across the state. Plus, I've got our mayor here. Look, I just wanted to stand up and say something quickly, just tell you that our primary goal here is to try to help clean up the city of Overton, try to do some work over there and try to help. You know, I understand that there's an issue with the timing and interlocal, and we're going to let some of the attorneys sort that out. They engage their counsel, have some conversations with the county attorney. That will work out how it works out. But we're going to work with the city of Overton, whether that's now or tomorrow, but we can't do that without a good relationship with you guys. And Purdue Brandon, we represent over 100 counties in the state of Texas. Whether we work inside that county with the little city of the city of Overton, or whether we represent the county, we still have to have a good relationship with you. And the county commissioner here, the county judge, so that's important to us. Purdue Brandon would not be what it is without merging the counties. So whether it's, you know, East Texas, West Texas, Purdue Brandon, we've cut our teeth working in rural counties just like West. It doesn't matter if you don't have a position, but please get to know us, and we'd love to have a good relationship working forward with the tax collectors, where you get. So, Howard, if there's anything to add?
I think hitting nail on the head, actually, we're not here to stir up any controversy. We just want to help the city of Overton. Respectfully, we appreciate you guys' time. I know it's been a privilege of course, just wandering on for me, and we wanted to appreciate your support and everything. Absolutely.
We don't want to cause any stress to you guys, but we want to have a great work on what you said about that. So if you have questions, you're willing to ask me, if I can comment on it, and if you want to reach out after me, of course, we can do that.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
And the help in the room from where I'm sitting is the interlocal agreement that the city of Overton has with the county.
Yes.
Are you aware of that agreement? And if you are, why did you go for the city council to get them to hire your company and not just as if the interlocal agreement was of no value?
I think it's a good question, and we did not take the interlocal agreement as it has no value. I think it does have some value. But again, I, I don't think that the issue here is whether or not the city of Overton can hire another tax firm, but it's pretty clear on that. I think the issue is on timing. When can we, does that start today? Does it start next year? Do we work from this part of next year? Is that today? I think that's the real question. So again, I don't want to comment on that. I think there's some people talking about that. I won't comment on it ongoing, maybe it'll matter, but I think it's something we're doing.
So you're willing to go to court for that?
That's not me. They, they have their own attorney. That would not be Purdue Brandon law.
But that's the city of Overton, more than that.
Yes. But I assure you that we did not view the interlocal as something that just didn't have a way, or that we wanted to somehow force something that we can, I can promise you that.
The way I read it is Lombarder will collect the linked taxes in 2042, as it is now. And then providing the city of Overton would want to go to hire you, they'd be more able to do that in 2023, providing y'all, do those reading, provide that in writing prior to January 1 of 2023. This year, had it been, had we received that before January 1 of this year, that's the way I read it. I think with this kind of, if we were late, we could avoid a whole lot of this controversy that you're here not wanting to start up.
Exactly what you told us. Yes. But I think, I think we'll work that out, or really. If there's no questions, I'd be happy to answer this. Thanks for having us. Thank you for having us.
Davey, your word I've got is that you have to power forward always for your state.
My standpoint to work with?
This is a good question, Judge. I can't speak to Ms. Barton's, you know, administrative needs, you know. I choose a pleasure to get to know, and so I don't want to sit here and tell her what she can and can't do in her own office. I can tell you that there are many counties where both law firms work, and that's not an issue. I've never, I've never known it to be a burden on the tax collector, but I know, I mean, and I work, Jim and I work together in Smith County, I work with some of the other law board attorneys in Wood County, and the list is endless where Purdue and Lombard are two giants in the industry, work in the same county together. Again, I'm not going to sit here and say what Ms. Barton means or does, but I don't think it's a burden. In fact, I think that the competition would help create the best from the country. And we see that in Smith County, we see that in other counties. Jim represents Tyler ISD, the largest acting jurisdiction in Texas. Jim represents the other entity in Smith County. And it's a good relationship to get the best out of each other.
So did y'all start that midstream? I'm sorry, did you pick up in the last four months of the year? Pick up with Tyler ISD, you start off first of the year.
Yeah, my guess is.
Where people understood and knew what they were getting.
I think it's a good, good point to get to be right.
I mean, my question is, is they're going to get two of these statements, and they're going to know what the heck I'm paying such and such a yes and such and such. I paid my.
Commissioner, yes, that's a great point. I think the best time to start these deals is not, you know, if you don't change horses in midstream, let's start at the beginning of the tax cycle. You know, my, my hope was to start checking two out of one this year when taxes be permanent for law firms. Now, again, I'm not sure what decisions will come when, when we talk about when this starts, but if it starts next year, we'll find a time that it can work, if it can work. But that's a good one.
Yes, sir. Initially, if it is changed, does it give this law firm here, does it go across anything that's part of your software or even what you have? A little bit.
There will be a missing software. We don't have the exact numbers because the pay is a good change. The problem with change is when you're going to actually get that right. It's just going to be several things in our office, we have to find our ways to do the double posting. There'll be extra reports, extra posted, extra time. You'll have enough to all the way in there just yet, because we are consolidated, we have never been split. It's just going to be a process of learning what we need to do and how we need to do it. The interlocal agreement is not just about the going for taxes, it's about everything that we do for Overton. The current taxes that are in, just everything, we calculate the taxes. We collect our taxes, we pay out to them, we pretty much do it all. And it's midstream, middle of 2020 tax year. Get rid of the timing of changing lawyers. It's not the point to say for changing lawyers because they have every right to brief them. But right now, it's our timing because we're going in in the middle of the 2020 year, and it will be very confusing for citizens of Overton because not only will they get one bill, they will get two bills. They were supposed to get anything for the resolution that I have not received. And they'll have to give me another resolution to collect, you know. If they force me to do so, they will be charged for whatever extra things in our office that needs to be, because the county will not afford the cost. So their costs for me collecting our taxes will probably go up.
Is it, it's my understanding there's about 18, 1900 partial into the city of Overton?
We're representing 1700.
1700. How many, talking about payments, how many additional payments would that raise?
We did the additional payments in October. May we do some, yeah, mail which we just sent out. Our audit will be on the juror's side, which should pay out with the extra reports that have to be running, extra stuff that she has to do, she'll have to learn how to do.
And I keep, I keep looking back at the interlocal agreement. And it's, if you want that changed, you're to note about the county before January 1 for a May 1 change. That's what they're for. And from where I'm at, that gives us time as far as the county, that would give the county time to calculate the extra work that's going to be, that's going to take place, the extra payments. And that'll give us time to get a current interlocal agreement and know what the charges will be to Overton, because I feel like everyone in here realizes the city, it's going to cost the city of Overton more money to hire you. I don't, I don't agree with that. I've never seen that in my years of collecting taxes. If we're having to do, if it's increasing the workload and increasing the payments, West County can't absorb those costs. And I, and I'm here to try to work it out the best we can for the best interest of Overton and West County, but we, we just agree that it's going to be more payments. Right?
I heard that, yes, sir.
So that's more in post with the city of Overton. It will be in the new interlocal agreement, because as of January 1, if we get this in writing, that interlocal agreement goes away. And what is it about a $47, $4800 payment from the city of Overton?
262 a year as of right now.
Right. Well, Commissioner, I have an question. Why don't we, why don't we try this? Why don't, if, if there's a genuine concern that it's going to cause, you know, a significant financial burden, why don't we, that's greater than right, give it to me, and I can see when that time comes, but, you know, I can kind of see what's going on. What, what would you do?
But right now, we haven't received any funding. So we're still going about what we have.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about when, when that time comes, you know, and we don't want to change in midstream. When that time comes, let's, let's do that, and we can, we can talk about it.
I don't think from a commission report standpoint, any of West will tell you guys how we're going to do it, which one we do, that's not what we're here for. But an interlocal agreement is put into place because things that you guys do and things that we do have far-reaching impact. And we just want to make sure that those things are a smooth transition, things are done, we're not in a lurch, we don't put the nation's office in a bind, trying to do something midstream, don't want to put our citizens in a state of confusion because of things. And that's one of the things that we're doing so important. It's, it's updated properly from the timeline. I think that's what Commissioner Hill is referring to there.
Absolutely. And I have, I have an inter, first thing, one has been a local agreement with you, and we have a contract with that to be local, and then we'll be up there in the next couple weeks, during some time, we'll give them back home. We're all here together. We just got to try to make it together. Got to make it easy on the city on our turf.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate y'all having us.
Well, we're starting collecting, you know, hiring different attorneys to collect your taxes. It's making it work.
Unless you believe the fact.
Right. So what are you asking for?
You want to have the interlocal agreement, because that's the only thing we have control of. Is that what I'm hearing?
Judge, I think at this time, I mean, until, until their attorney speaks to Jimerson, I think we're not asking.
Okay. So Mr. Gobs, we're going to make the money pass.
I'm not going to help you to pass on any questions.
Second. All right, I got a question. Mr. Gobs, second question, what word? All those in favor?
Ah.
opposed, opposed passes. The report discuss possibly approve for another rehire of the previous state office.
Okay. I assume that's ours for the county district attorney's office. We've had two lawyers lead Andy Norfus give a protest, and I just want to be able to, they're hard to locate, I want to be able, when I meet with them, if I want to offer somebody a job, it's inappropriate at the time, I'd like to be able to do that, except the same rate. Is that the same rate of lawyers?
motion, please. Second. Motion, please, put words, second, Mr. Kirkdahl. You know, we. Can't.
Wait, you want this to turn? No, this is reality, I don't listen to that.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Discuss possibly approved posting and hiring a part-time position Russ County Library Assistant.
Good morning. So our mountain enterprise, like, we're going to be part-time physician. This is going to be vacated at the end of this month. Um, and I was asking the commissioner to post that part-time position so we can hire for us in time to have us, have a new staff member equipped and ready for some of this program. The part-time position is already vested in. Uh, it would at most be twenty-two hours a week. Uh, going forward for any of our part-time positions, uh, we were going to say at maximum we'll work this amount. Though we are not guaranteed that it will be this amount. I've talked to Mel, uh, she feels like in our high, uh. High usage months, she would probably reutilize that person at twenty-two hours a month, uh, a week. But then on weeks that are not had usage, normal months during the school year, and everyone is still in school, she's anticipating it probably be seventeen hours a lesson.
Motion for approval. Second. Motion for. Gibson, second, Mr. Yow. All those in favor? All opposed? Discuss possibly approved except donate books, DVDs, audiobook, be added to Russ County Library Assistant.
So this we have is, uh, covers any donations that we received through March and April that, uh, the staff member that looked at them thought that would be a good addition to our collection.
Motion for approval. Second. Motion, Mr. Gibson, second, Mr. Kirkdahl, all those in favor? All opposed, motion passes. Discuss possibly approved except a hundred dollar cash donation from book sale. Thank you for approving. Put words, second, Mr. Gibson, all those in favor? All opposed? Discuss possibly approved Russ County Library Assistant to participate in the Texas State Library and Archive Commissions. Interlibrary Loan Reimbursement Program.
Interlibrary Loan is a program that we just pay in to where if someone, uh, within the state of Texas or even outside of the state of Texas would like to borrow one of our collection items, we lend that item out. Um, our, we are also able to, to, uh, request items from other library systems as well. We do have a lot of patrons who utilize on our end that program. And, uh, the state of Texas does reimburse us at the end of the year for anything that we loaned out to somewhere in, you know, Minnesota or West Texas or something like that.
Is there an expense to the county to complete part of the program?
No. We have, uh, the way they have it set up, um, when it's, that's what this reimbursement program is. So it's an expense upfront to us, but then at the end of the year, they reimburse us. Um, we get reimbursed for postage that it takes. We get reimbursed for, um, just letting the item go. Uh, so they show upfront, yes, but in the end, no, when they do, they do reimburse us well.
Thank you. Second. Motion, Mr. Yow, second, Mr. Gibson, all those in favor? All opposed? Discuss possibly approved, paying up public libraries to apply for a grant to talk around this to replace part of your show.
So I've kind of mentioned here and there this particular grant that we've sort of been threatening to be able to apply for it. This is our request to apply. Uh, the grant will allow us to take all of the shelving, all of the furniture out of the town library and then it will get re, um, replaced with brand new furniture, brand new shelving. Uh, the Tucker Foundation actually provides, uh, an architect who comes in and looks at everything and says, okay, this, this should act, this section of the library should, would be best utilized in, if we put this type of furniture in and these shelving, just shelving units in these areas. Uh, it's, it's a great thing. They can do that. Wonderful. It would be a great, um, just refresh of the town library.
So some matching grant. So.
It's totally funded. Uh, we're anticipating the Tucker Foundation will provide a hundred thousand dollars to work to do that. Anything that is over that, um, they actually have other grants, other, um, grant entities that they work with. And they say, okay, well, we have, uh, this grantee is, um, gonna have this much over and it fits right in with your organization. We would actually apply for the grant directly with those locations. But they do work, Tucker does work with us so that we don't pay for it. It's completely paid for by other grant foundations.
Do you consult with, with Rebecca? If you have a name, is that something else I would?
We've done it solely because it's usually asking questions about, uh, we, you guys have it in front of you, but it's asking more about, um, who the grant would benefit. If it's anything that has to do money wise, then yes, we would definitely go and we would correct it with it. But it's listed links to demographics, who would benefit from receiving the grant, uh, this type of thing.
I'm going to move on from the grant.
Second. Mr. Kirkdahl, second, Mr. Yow, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And discuss possibly approved Russ County Airport Rules and Regulations. All right.
So over the last year and a half, I've had many questions come up and, um, there's really, the last rules that we've had at the airport were Susan Downey party in nineteen eighty-six. So like in my office, there is not a set rule for, for many things. I found this list that y'all had, I think, in front of you. It's actually the model airport rules and regulations from TaxDOT. And it says in here that we can add or take away anything that we basically need for our airports. Um, all the things that are highlighted in your packet or things that have come up over my last year and a half, um, that I think that we would need to add to TaxDOT's, uh, sample. Um. Y'all just, you know. So I go, remind you, if you want to look at it. Pass it around and copy it, all of this in my life. Um. Really, I'd like for each of y'all, if you want to, to look through it and see if there's anything you want to add. Y'all might think of something I have looked at other airports and I've also asked on my pilots on some of the things that deal with pilots, if, if that even is, you know, feasible to my extent, um, or, before I add them.
I appreciate Alexa, uh, taking the lead on this and getting lined out, doing the research and all. Uh, I would agree with her on that. I think if we could look this over, y'all would think maybe we'll time it, look it over and put it on the next. We did a meeting. Uh, to perform approval and see if there's anything else that would not want to include. But I appreciate you. Keep this through.
Oh, yeah. I'm like sure y'all have a call on.
Oh, yours, Colin? Okay. Yes, yes, I can.
In the back of the station.
I'll, I'll tell it there.
All right, sir. The motion, Mr. Wood, pass.
Motion, pass. Put this on the next court.
Thank you. Good works. Second, Mr. Gibson. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right. Discuss possibly approved except public services for a large forty yard container for leg transportation.
Had a, an issue, uh, that's ripped up on our collection sites in my precinct. Uh, every weekend we're having to call out, uh, someone has to go and compact the dumpsters. And so, uh, just looking at the, the time that we're having to put into that, it would be cheaper on us in the long run. To just have a extra container at those sites and so forth. I'm eleven, whatever it is. I'm like much for proof.
Feel that motion cover eleven and eleven? Second. Second. Mr. Yow, seconds. All those in favor? Uh, all those opposed, motion passes. Discuss possibly approved, commission for business for April twenty twenty-two. Special meeting on the fifth and nineteenth, regular meeting on April the ninth.
I read over minutes, I'm not doing a word.
Second. Motion, Mr. Kirkdahl, second, uh, Mr. Whitburn, all those in favor? All opposed, motion passes. Fourteen, discuss possibly approved following the fourth for April twenty twenty-two. Auditorium treasurers, just each one, two, three, four, five. Constable four, three, five. Expo report, commit summary. Expo maintenance, maintenance. Airport manager. Lots of plate, library, engine health. What's happening?
Amen. He put me through this.
Motion, Mr. Yow, to brew items, eight, two, nine. Second. Second, Mr. Gibson, all those in favor? Uh, all those opposed? Other comment, no action be taken. And it better be free. Don't make a free word.
Uh, yeah, just fortunately this time, I'm not telling y'all about severe weather coming. Just give a brief update on what we did, I put it on our social media. Uh, Thursday, eighth, fifth tornado, we had three, uh, National Weather Service confirmed. Uh, the one in Mountain Enterprise that affected the whispering times was EF one. And they said that was about three point four miles in length. And we were fortunate that the only property damage was right there in the RV park. And that went out just two east, it didn't affect any more homes. Uh, just woods. Uh, and then the bigger tornado that we had in Churchill community was EF two. And that was about eight point six miles in length, affected more homes. Uh, where we were lucky there is a home, a better built home. Uh, we had one house with the roof ripped off, considered major damage. And we had one older wood frame house that was completely pushed about eight feet. One of the darnedest things I ever seen. It was broke down in the middle and kind of fell in and it was completely demolished. Nobody was home, they've got insurance, uh, they had somewhere to go stay. And then the third tornado was EF one, started in the aluminum, the brick and iron. Crossed over twenty-six fifty-eight, destroyed some trees, then crossed over Martin Lake into the Nola camp. Didn't cause any property damage here. So that being said, we've had all these tornadoes, I think we've been real fortunate. Uh, I forgot to mention the guy in Churchill got injured, had a tree fall on him because he was up trying to get his dogs put up. Uh, right in the middle tornado. So he went, got treated, his home doing better. So he's just really fortunate, headshot. Uh, everybody did really good, uh, even the weather service complimented the dog guys, the road. the road bridge guys, about how just Russ County, every time they've been out, it's all you see, the dump trucks, the equipment, and everybody working together. If roads cleared, and they don't see that in all the other counties that they go through surveys in. And also the Sheriff's Office did a really great job. Uh, Sheriff himself was always out in the know of all this, and all the on-duty guys, he was taking it seriously. And then, uh, Fire Department, Electric Co-op, they're out working for the yellow, tracking power drilling. So it's truly kind of, uh, awesome experience every time we've seen this happen, how everybody is thinking, they're just, I mean, I, I try to go out and be a liaison, and we'll meet something, get it, share information, but everybody's watching, watching, doing all the work. Anyway, everybody did a great job. Good. Sorry, you guys. As always, everybody does a good job. We are the number one county in the whole Shreveport Forecast Office for tornadoes, so it's hot this year. So, uh, kind of all like counties and parishes, and they probably have like twenty-five, twenty-eight counties and parishes. Russ County number one, so hopefully we're done.
I agree.
So the next, the next seven days, it's gonna be hot and no rain, so hopefully it's all good time.
Thank you. See you picking it up, you ready?
I'll put it out on our social media, if I saw it. I'm brain-dead, I bet.
Well, I don't think it's still here to hate our audience, or anything else, but I want to say a big thank you, please. Thought the mystery here is seeing this thing out. Calling over one friend, got water up there. On my phone, I did it up, where you need me, all my guys, the witnesses, the guys, they were there. And, uh, and it makes a lot, we're trying to figure out what, what, what's your area to delta to. It's once in a while, she is, uh, they were all on top of it. And, uh, like I say, that's, that's loving work. You got one man in trouble, another's through the board, had to do what, it comes a long way.
Is anybody else?
If I might say, um, I've covered a lot of different times in my career. I want to know that the Michigan's Board, and those involved, some of the best people I've ever worked with, have loved their town. Citizen attacks, very, I think you said very well.
Amen.
You can put that on the front page.
Didn't take the letter?
I'll wait till later. Should've got a quote welded, I know everybody's happy about their fight.
Stay away, welder, mind you.
Okay, uh, proof back of the bill.
If I go through this again, I'm bringing a spittoon and a full can of stuff.
David.
Yeah, Michigan's Board, this will hold in the name. What do you mean? Yeah. Where, where are we going? It's time to go. See you there.
Bye.
Okay, well, it sounds okay. I'd rather you, I'd rather you do that. Go on, go. This thing's getting stronger.
That motion, Mr. Goff, please pay it. Second. Second, Mr. Kirkland, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Make a motion with Jerry. Second, Mr. Goff, all those in favor? All opposed.